Okay, pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 31, 2023. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discussion of the Board President, who will be here shortly. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, June 1, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administration Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the boardroom on the north wall. Mr. Ryan, roll call, please.
Mr. Born. Ms. Erdnberger. Ms. Block.
Here.
Mr. Head.
Present.
Mr. Hirschenbach. Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Logan. Four present, three absent. Ms. Vice President.
Is it possible to amend that motion to retake the roll call?
Mr. Born.
All right, welcome. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 31, 2023. Okay, that part has already been done. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Trustees with comments and opinions. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Trustees is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent. Please state and spell your name and state your address for the record at the beginning of your comments. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Rehan will come get them from you. Is there anyone here or anyone present here today that would like to address the Board? All right, it does not appear there's anyone here. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. The minutes of the last OSERS Board of Trustees meeting on Thursday, May 5, 2022, have been presented to you for your review. Does the Board have any corrections, amendments to those minutes?
I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Rehan, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Born.
Aye.
Ms. Erdnberger. Ms. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Head.
Aye.
Mr. Hirschenbach. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Dr. Logan. Five ayes, no nays.
All right, they are approved. All right, Mr. Rehan will now provide an update on the OSERS management transition to Npers.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to bring you up to speed on the Npers transition project. Npers has selected a vendor to manage the OSERS transition project, and they started work in late January. The vendor that was selected was Linea, which was the vendor that did the interim study for the feasibility in 2019. So they are very familiar with both of the systems and have a great reputation in the retirement system area, sector of the business. And we're looking very much forward to working with them. They've identified three primary areas that they're going to be focusing on during this transition. One is business analysis, or reviewing the current day-to-day practices that OSERS has in administering the pension plan and assisting Npers in developing processes for them to implement post-transition. That doesn't mean that everything will be exactly the same, but it does mean that all of the statutory requirements and the existing rules and regs will go over to Npers in that same fashion. And so there should be no significant differences once Npers takes over management of the plan. The second area they'll be focusing on is data conversion. And so they're working with our OPS IMS staff to identify the data needed out of the pension module in the OSERS system to be delivered to Npers for upload into their system to administer the plan. It's been a bit of a challenge, the work that we have begun, with all of the institutional knowledge that we have lost with Ms. Carter and Mr. Ellis no longer being with us. And also, some significant staff on the IT side are no longer with the district and have been separated for several years. But we are working diligently with them to identify information and provide that to them. And test files of masked data, no personal identifiable information, to Npers have already been delivered to start the review process. And the third area, which does not necessarily involve OPS or OSERS to a significant degree, is the development of the Npers system to actually administer the OSERS system. While OSERS and the State Teachers Plan do have some similarities and some overlap, there will need to be some reconfiguration and reprogramming of the NPERS system at Npers for them to track all of the member data and administer the system moving forward, beginning on September 1, 2024. The primary area that we would be involved in that is helping to do parallel testing during calendar year 2024, where we process our payments and input our HR information on a regular basis, provide that to Npers for them to put in their system, and them to run processes and validate that they get the same results that we do in our system. We've held several kickoff meetings with various levels of staff between Linea, Npers, and OSERS and OPS. And currently, detailed tasks and timelines are being developed in both the short term and the long term, knowing there's going to be several sprints along the way. But it is a marathon, and so we're developing a plan accordingly. In your materials is a timeline that Linea provided. You'll note it starts in January 2023 and goes through December 2024. It includes those three major buckets that I just went over, as well as some tasks to be developed during 2024. One of the primary things that OPS will have a responsibility for moving forward is to begin reporting data to Npers on a monthly basis about employees and their salaries and wage history, creditable hours and time, and also their pension contributions. That will be something that has been fairly seamless for the last many years because of the fact that the pension module resides in the same system as the HR information. But we will have to begin to develop processes just like LPS and Lincoln, Millard Public Schools, and all other suburban school districts do to transmit that information to Npers in a timely manner. We expect that to be very routine once we get the processes established. But there will be some significant work early on in calendar year 2024 to develop that related to what Npers needs moving forward. And lastly, on the Npers transition update, our communications team with OPS mailed a transition update to all members in February. We also provided all leadership, all individuals who received the leadership, weekly leadership links email, primarily principals and department leaders, a communications toolkit to provide some information to questions and answers to questions that staff may ask their building leaders or their department leaders. And in your packet of materials today is a copy of that toolkit. Many thanks to our communications team with Omaha Public Schools for helping to put this together and provide an update to our members, retired, current, active, and term vested. This went out to over 13,000 individuals across all membership within the retirement system. And the current plan is to continue to provide updates semi-annually through September 2024 to keep individuals updated on what is going on with that transition. Yes, please.
And could you help me with how you pronounce your name?
It is Ryan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there were letters that went out to about 13,000 members in February. What kind of response did the OSERS office receive after that letter?
We received some phone calls, but to be honest, the phone traffic was much less than we were anticipating.
Okay, and are we tracking those to see if there's, you know, and I know you can do a myriad of things, but are we tracking those to identify if there's a similarity of issue perhaps that they're calling about? You see what I'm asking for?
That is a great question. Unfortunately, the district and OSERS do not have a contact management tool. That was something that we discussed with our partners, with OPS Communications. And because of the lack of that, we were unable to really track any of that. What I would say is that none of the questions really rose to a level of concern that needed direct intervention from me. So I think they were just some of the general questions. Is everything still going to be all right? Are we going to still have the same benefits? Are any of those types of things changing? But nothing significant. We did consider allowing individuals to opt in, whether they wanted hard copy snail mail or email, what their preferences were on that. Because, but because of the lack of a customer relation system, we're unable to do that at this point in time. So no, we have not been tracking it specifically.
Excellent, thank you. Last question on this page is, you talked about the files going over from OSERS to Npers. And is there, and I know they've been, excuse me, they've been going over for some period of time now, but is there any audits or anything checking accuracy of, you know, you know, names, addresses? Or is this a file that's already been sent over multiple times in years past and verified that it's accurate and all that?
So this information that is currently being sent over is masked. So Npers staff and Linea, the vendor managing the transition process, doesn't have access to personally identifiable information. But there has been some validation done via some queries on non-identifiable data fields to validate that the information that was uploaded through a file transfer process did get to Npers accurately without any bits and bytes being scrambled up.
I said last question. I, is there, so say, at the end of the day, when everything is transitioned fully to Npers, and is there an opportunity for members of OSERS or of the Omaha Public Schools Pension Program to, I guess, ensure accuracy or have a venue or a format if they do discover some discrepancy? Am I being clear?
So I think that that would be part of the process of sending out annual statements. And Npers sends out annual statements to all of the teachers currently in the State Teacher Retirement Plan. And they will continue to send out annual statements to the OSERS members as a separate standalone system. Certainly, if a member sees that statement or has a question regarding their contributions, they can reach out and they can ask about that. But I would not believe that we would anticipate having a formal opportunity where we invited people to call in necessarily. But certainly, if they have a question about their contributions, we would address that and provide a history and go over any questions they might have about it.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Erdn.
It kind of actually follows on, so thank you for getting us going in that direction. I was talking, I was thinking about the future updates and that are going to be semi-annual through September 24. I think that maybe that's our job, is to figure out when, what, you know, what the, or at least to participate in when we want to give notice to our beneficiaries. It occurs to me that the last message we give should not be September 2024, but maybe August 2024, just saying, okay, it'll happen. So what is the plan? And then work our way back from that.
Sure, so we have not put together the exact timeline, but I would anticipate that that communication would be prior to September 1, 2024. You know, without having Mr. Maskell from OPS Communications here to help out and answer that question, my gut feeling is that we probably have a communication that goes out sometime June, July, early August, that everything's been transferred over. We've been running parallel testing. All the data is processing correctly on Npers side relative to how OSERS has been processing it. And then really, any post-September 1, 2024 communication would come from the Npers and the PERS.
Well, kind of to follow up on what President Born said. And I'm not sure exactly what the transfer, how a transfer of data occurs and what this sort of parallel processing does. But would I like to get in July of 2024, in effect, an annual statement saying, okay, this is what information we had for you that we have sent to Npers? So I sort of have a chance to see what, okay. And then if I get my annual statement from Npers, I have something to compare it to or a starting point? Just, is that even relevant? Would that be useful?
Certainly, that is something that we could take into consideration and look at. Typically, the statements have been on the fiscal year. And due to timing and constraints with the getting those processed and printed and sorted and mailed, it's been more of a January, February activity. But it probably is something that we can definitely take a look at about sending a statement out sometime on or before the actual transition. So the parallel testing, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit more about that in your question, is where we have said, here is all the information as of making a date up, March 31, 2024, that's in the OSERS system. And Npers will put that in their system. We will then send them the information that we processed, creditable time, contributions, interest calculations. They will then replicate those processes in their system, and then we'll compare notes. Did your system process the same monthly benefit for Ms. Erdnberger? Did Ms. Johnson have the same amount of contributions in her record? Did Ms. Block earn the same amount of interest for that month in her record? And so we would scrub that data, compare notes, and make sure that they're getting the same results that we do. And it's very important that that process be at least 90 days long, so we have three monthly cycles to go through. Because the first one, there probably will be some things that don't quite agree or align. And so that gives us another two cycles to work through it. And it's not that we have to wait until the next month to try it again. There can be some interim testing. But really, you want to be able to say, and Npers expects to be able to say, we've programmed our system, we have all the data that we need, and we got the same results that OSERS did.
Well, I guess I'm thinking that if I wasn't sitting here and able to ask whatever question I wanted to, that the possibility exists that when I get that letter in July of 2024, and you're telling me that you've been running these parallel things, and they've been working, and that gives me a lot of comfort, telling me what the starting data was that you sent to Npers. And while I recognize that's a sep, you know, that's an additional run of the data that, in addition to what you're doing in January, anyway. Yeah, I guess I'd like to put it on, in the parking lot of things to think about as something that would help me have confidence as an OSERS member that you told Npers the right stuff and that we can go on from there. But just to think about it.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question about, like, probably the very beginning, something. Because again, I hold retirement seminars for my members, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm, I want that information to be the same. So one thing that you said was like the statutes and all that, obviously, that remains the same because that's, you know, state. But something that I have noticed is that Npers has, like, everybody's got the medical COLA, right? I'm sorry, everybody's got the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, that they're allotted when they are getting their benefits. But the medical COLA is something that is unique to OSERS. And so again, maybe this is a question for Megan, I'm sorry. But I just want to make sure, is that something that's still, is that something that's still switching over to? I don't, I don't know, want to tell people that that's still going to be a thing. Do you know what I'm talking about?
So the medical COLA is still in statute. And as long as it is not changed prior to the transition to Npers, it will transfer over to Npers, and they will administer it just as it has been in the past.
Just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
Accountants and administrators shall always defer to attorneys, but I still like to answer the question anyway.
Mr. Ryan, I have a question. A few people approached me with the latest statement that came out in February. The annuity estimates have now been eliminated. Wasn't represented on the current mailing that we received last six weeks ago?
That is correct. That is a process change based on Npers practices. And so we, over a period of several months, stretching back into last calendar year, talked through that with Npers and the steering committee between the two organizations, OPS, OSERS Management and Npers Management. And the decision was made that Npers would not be presenting a benefit estimate to OSERS recipients once they assumed management of the plan and felt that it was best to start that process as soon as practical. And so that was the decision that was made.
So if that's the new position that we have to convey to OPS employees, what will be the resource that individuals that are looking to retire in a few years, five years or less in most cases? They reach out currently to the office here at TAC. Will the employees have a resource? Will they have a resource via phone? Or will it only be internet? Or do they have to physically go to Lincoln to sit down and chat with someone?
So at this point in time, OSERS staff is more than happy to talk about the benefits and has been talking about the benefits with members and helping them determine what a general estimate would be based on their years of service and what tier they currently participate in. The historic practice of the office has been that a formal benefit estimate is only generated for members who are qualified for retirement within the next fiscal year. Certainly, Npers has great customer service through their phone bank in Lincoln that they provide to 243 other school districts throughout the state. And I would anticipate that they will be very diligent in providing that good customer service via phone. Email gets a little problematic because you're sending personal information electronically. They do currently, Npers does currently have a calculator for the State Teacher Retirement System. That's to be determined what they'll do with OSERS, but I can certainly inquire with Mr. Gurkey and Mr. Coming from Npers about what their thoughts or intents are at this point in time about having something like that for the OSERS system, where our members would be able to get a very basic estimate of their unreduced retirement benefit, either electronically or by calling over the phone.
So we'll have to ask, I am specifically inquiring about the classified employees. You did make reference to they have a calculator for the teachers, the certificated staff. Will they have the same for the classified staff?
So I apologize if I didn't give a clear answer. When I say the State Teachers Retirement Plan, I guess that's what it's colloquially known as. But that plan also covers classified staff for all of the 243 other school districts in the state. And they have the same benefits and are able to access the same calculator.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Ryan. I just, so the possible retirees and anybody can call the OSERS office currently and get an estimate. Or if I'm trying to retire here in the near future, I can get that, those, you know, those almost actual numbers. There's a charge for that right now, isn't there? Like a $25 fee?
So, no, those are two separate things. So a request for an estimate of benefits by someone who is eligible or will be eligible by the next school year is done free of charge. There is a $25 fee that is charged for the calculation of the direct purchase of up to five years of service to help supplement your retirement.
Gosh, thank you. I just wanted clarification.
But no, just a general benefit estimate, there is no charge on that.
Is, does Npers charge for something like that as well? Or do we not know that yet?
I would rather not answer that question. I don't know for certain on that. But I can inquire about that and provide a response to the Board.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So the next couple items on the agenda are related to some bumps in the road that we've had at the start of calendar year 2023. Through an unfortunate circumstance, we regrettably sent out 1099R forms to all of our retirees who are receiving benefits or to individuals who received a refund of their contributions and interest earned. The error on the 1099R was related to the federal employer identification number. Due to an inadvertent error in updating the computer system, the OSERS EIN was changed to the district's EIN. And during the process of generating those 1099Rs and reviewing the information, we kind of had a trees-for-the-forest issue where we were so busy looking at the individual member-level data to make sure that it was correct, we did not have a staff member that looked at that one box on the 1099R form. And I apologize. And we are, we were all just sick to our stomachs when we realized that that had happened. And we have added a very specific step to our end-of-year checklist to make sure that that is reviewed. Complacency is no excuse, but that's really what it was. It's a process that had operated smoothly for years without incident. And this inadvertent, inadvertent error caused us to send out information that was incorrect and have to communicate that out to our members, which we did as soon as practical after being notified. Was very thankful that a very diligent member, preparing their tax return early, noticed the change of that number on their form and contacted our payroll department at OPS and notified us and asked the question, is this right? And we said, no, it was not, unfortunately. So we did communicate that out to members via a letter as quickly as possible and then generated corrected 1099 forms. And those have been sent out to all of our members. And the related information transmitted to the IRS, so there should be no concerns or issues with the 1099Rs when they're filing their taxes.
Mr. Ryan, only because I have the benefit of this being the third time I've heard this, I was going to add, for the benefit of my coach trustees, that I had asked you if this glitch was a product of the transition. And you had told me no, that it was. And you had told me, no, that it was strictly, would have happened whether we were doing, going to Lincoln or not, it was. Something that just happened here, so I don't want people to think that there is. A general flaw in transitioning to Lincoln that results in this problem, it was.
No, thank you very much for bringing that up, Ms. Erdnberger. It, it was entirely unrelated to the OSERS transition. And if I'm being honest, it was related to the ESRS stipends and the processing related to that.
And not somebody in HR?
No, it was not a data entry error in HR.
I might have said that at the board meeting and I was wrong.
Other questions about the ten ninety-nine Rs? All right. So we also. PeopleSoft is a very old system and a very finicky system. The last update that was done to it was twenty eighteen. And unfortunately, the pension module did not receive the tender love and care that it deserved at that point in time. With the departure of Mr. Ellis, who was really the backbone. And the person who had the best day-to-day working knowledge of the PeopleSoft retirement module. We ran into some periodic processing and that's the technical term for it. Periodic processing where we run a function in the system that updates every member's information monthly. The amount you contributed that month through your payroll contributions, the amount of interest earned that month. Your service time and credit earned that month, all of that information gets updated monthly. We noticed during the fall that there were some members whose information was not updating on a regular basis. And so in the process of troubleshooting it with our partners in IMS, we reached out to Oracle. They were. Befuddled at how, how the system was and said, we really just need to send you some updated code. To insert into the system and then everything should work fine. We did that, we did some testing. Everyone updated. Unfortunately, we did not necessarily look at all of the data we should have. Before we moved it out of the test environment and into the production environment. And as a result of not. Doing as thorough testing as we could have. A change was introduced into the system that. Modified how interest is calculated for members from the ways OSERS interest is allocated per statute. I would characterize it as Oracle gave us code for a more quote-unquote "normal" way of calculating interest. From your beginning monthly balance, including your contributions that month and the interest rate over the period of a calendar year. Instead of a fiscal year. As a result of this unfortunate error introducing the new code. The interest calculation was recalculated for all existing members. Who were either active or term vested. And that information was incorrect in the system. We have the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts currently working on the calendar year audit required by statute. They noticed it when they began their fieldwork and notified us and asked, why did you change the way you're calculating interest? And what was the rationale and requirement for doing that? And we said, we didn't change how we calculated interest, that's interesting. So immediately we did some research on member balances. Identified what was going on and have been working diligently to get the. Code corrected in the system to calculate interest correctly. We had hoped to have that done by Friday, March thirty-first. Unfortunately, we did not reach, meet that deadline, but as of this morning. We had a solution in a test environment that recalculated. Eight thousand members' information correctly. Approximately fifty individuals had a variance of one dollar or more to what their last backup information was. And so we're currently reviewing the facts and circumstances for those individuals to see. What's unique about their record that didn't calculate correctly in the test environment. We anticipate to have that corrected within the next couple days. Hopefully, early next week and the corrected coding moved into the production system. And a thorough sample and testing of all members' records. To ensure that their balances are correctly stated in the system relative to their interest earned on their contributions. Due to the timing of when we were informed of the error and when it happened, we did send out refunds to forty-four individuals that were not correct. We have notified those individuals that they received an overpayment and are awaiting repayment from those individuals. Many of the amounts were in the de minimis range, the twenty-five to fifty-dollar range, but there were some significant amounts. There were a couple individuals that did choose to withdraw a significant amount of their contributions. But we are working diligently to recover those unearned contributions and interest. Per the OSERS rules and regulations.
Mr. Ryan, were those members that had terminated employment here or?
Correct.
So it's not like we can deduct it from future paychecks or anything?
So just kind of curious, I know that, I know there's an obligation on the plan to go after those resources, it's not really negotiable, but how? How far do you go? I mean, just kind of curious, what meets your statutory obligation in an attempt to collect?
So I, I think there are a. This is maybe a time where I'm not going to answer. Provide an off-the-cuff answer. Certainly, we're going to do our due diligence. I, I would consult OPS legal counsel and outside counsel from Baird Home on exactly how far. We should or could go. I would perhaps not anticipate taking someone to a collection agency that owed seventy-five dollars. But if they owed, you know, a significant sum of money, then that would definitely change the lens. The current rules and regs provide for administrative waiver of unearned benefits or interest contributions of up to twenty-five dollars. And so some of those truly de minimis amounts would just be waived. But we will do our due diligence and contact the individuals without going overboard, I would say.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right. Lots of activity going on continually in the springtime here at OSERS. Kavanaugh McDonough is, McDonald, excuse me, is currently working on our actuarial valuation. We've provided them information, they have provided some questions for us on the data as they do every year. To make sure that they've got the information that they need and that it's correctly stated. Staff is currently working on responding to those data validation questions. Typically, those are just things where, hey, this looks different, this person looks different than they did last year. Did they change positions? They were classified, now they're not. And so we just go through and answer those questions, usually ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's. Is just truly a change in the data from the prior year based on actual facts and circumstances. Because of the data system issues, we are a little bit behind on getting, we were a little bit behind on getting information to them. We do anticipate having a draft report available by May fifteenth. And purposely scheduled the next OSERS trustees meeting for June first for. Ms. Beckham and Kavanaugh McDonald to come present on the results of the actuarial valuation. Any questions on that?
I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the actuarial report that will give us our ARC number, right?
That is correct, yes.
Required contribution. And presumably, no matter what happens, that number has to come in before we do the budget for the next year. And is that date, May fifteenth, June first?
So we.
Into that requirement?
We, so the budget runs September first through August thirty-first for the school district. And so we use the last year's projected ARC payment for twenty twenty-three. To budget for the current year that we're now in, twenty twenty-three. I would anticipate that number to be higher than what the projection was last year due to the market circumstances. But we, speaking with my Omaha Public Schools Chief Financial Officer hat on. We do have sufficient room in the budget to handle and fulfill any obligation. That the actuaries would calculate for the additional required contribution.
Can you remind me, we, there was sort of a traffic jam of Douglas County hearing, OPS budget hearing. That we had to get done, but that all was in September though, wasn't it?
That is correct, and that would be unrelated to the ARC payment.
Thank you.
All right. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts began fieldwork on the OSERS calendar year audit in mid-February. Because of the system issue, again, I was beating a dead horse, but it has been very impactful in our day-to-day lives here administering the system. We have had some delays and have not been as responsive as we would have liked to the auditors. They are understanding because they want the correct data. And so we've been working diligently with them to provide information as available for them to do their necessary testing. Of the financial statements and review of activities. And we are still believe that we're on track to meet our statutory deadline of the state auditors issuing a calendar year audit by June thirtieth.
Mr. Ryan, would there be any preliminary findings that we could talk about at the June first meeting?
I would expect the fieldwork to be at a point in time where we would be able to have a discussion about preliminary findings and recommendations. And management's response at that point in time.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so that's everything on the administrator's update. And. The next item we have on the agenda is the trustee meeting schedule.
So let me ask one more time, no, just I want to make sure everybody, if anyone has any questions regarding the transition plan or anything. It, it looks well on hand, I, you know, I, I know. It's always painful when errors are made, but when I, when you look at the timeline, you've listed out the corrections were immediate and. You know, I think it's an expectation anymore, the things that are so complicated that mistakes are going to happen, but it's. Appreciate your diligence and correct, and I mean, it sounds like the members are being well taken care of, so thank, thank you.
Thank you for that. We were all very sick at our stomachs when each of the individual errors were identified. And there were some, there was a lot of hard work by both OSER staff and Omaha Public School staff to get things corrected. As quickly and as timely as practical.
Thank you. You know, final questions on the transition plan? Okay, we'll jump into the administrator's report?
That, that was it.
Okay, perfect, all right. Okay, so then we'll now we'll jump down to the proposed OSERS Board of Trustees meeting schedule for the remainder of twenty twenty-three, Mr. Ryan?
Yes, so the OPS Board of Education, OSERS Ad hoc Committee met a couple weeks ago. And I apologize to them about being remiss about scheduling a meeting sooner than we had. I, in reviewing the minutes, I see that we were supposed to have quarterly meetings after our May fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting. And those did not happen, so wanting to get back on track with that. So that's why we called this meeting today on April sixth. And then knowing the timelines of the actuary and audit reports that will be upcoming. June first, the first Thursday in June seems like the next natural point in time. For the Board of Trustees to reconvene. And then that just maps out quarterly to June seventh and December seventh for the first Thursday every three months.
All right, so full disclosure, I take a little responsibility for missing those quarterly meetings, to be honest, so it's not, it's not unusual. I apologize to the board. All right, so June first, September seventh, December seventh, all meetings will be here and that'll be the meetings for the rest of twenty twenty-three. So we'd look for a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All righty, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Ryan, can you take the role from there?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger? Ms. Block? Mr. Head?
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays.
All right, the meeting schedule for the remainder of twenty twenty-three passes and that's, that's what we'll do. Any, anything else for the committee before we, before we wrap up?
Just notice to the board, the trustee transition, transition trustee board. That the December seventh meeting may have to be held somewhere else. We're tentatively scheduling board renovation for technology during that timeframe, updating to twenty twenty-three. So we might not have the boardroom available, we'll keep that in advance.
Sounds great, so we'll keep the date, but maybe a different location that we'll publish in advance, so. All right, so the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, June first, twenty twenty-three. At four PM in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center here at thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office of the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
So we have a motion, motion in a second, Mr. Ryan?
I'm sorry, who seconded? Ms. Johnson, thank you. Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger? Ms. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Head? Ms. Johnson? Five ayes, no nays.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.